This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
All right. Well, now we're going to have Cub Scout Troop Pack 65 will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is unified by the United States of America, the spirit of public religion stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal and just supreme.
The only nation to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside council chambers. Those on the list will be invited to speak at the first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have the opportunity to speak during public hearing items this evening or at the final call, public invited to be heard, on any of the items at the end of the meeting. We now have the minutes to approve for February 12th. Are there any corrections or additions to be made? Councilmember Madison?
Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of the minutes from February 12th, 2013.
Okay, let's vote. Passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions or submissions?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, the Twin Peaks Metropolitan District Service Plan Amendment was sent out to council on Friday as a supplement to your packet. It's being added to the agenda as consent agenda 9F.
Okay.
That's it.
Is there any part from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor, we have two items. We have a brief presentation for the Meals on Wheels group regarding a couple of activities. And they're bringing you all up to date on their activities. And then we have one item from Sandy Cedar on the retreat discussion. So we'll start with the Meals on Wheels group.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Katie Weiser, and I'm the Development Coordinator at Longmont Meals on Wheels. I just want to take some time tonight to kind of go over all the services that Longmont Meals on Wheels are providing in Longmont and kind of give an overview of some upcoming events as well. One of our services is that we provide the lunchtime meal at the Senior Center. This meal is open to anyone and is offered on a sliding fee scale. This meal is designed to encourage seniors and people with disabilities who are able to have a place to gather and socialize regardless of anyone's financial needs. The meal encourages seniors to stay mentally and physically active. Longmont Meals on Wheels is also delivering meals in the homes of frail elderly and people with disabilities. And to this day, this is still 75% of what we're doing. Our meals meet or exceed all nutritional guidelines and can fulfill many special diet needs. Our volunteers, though, are not just delivering meals. They're also trained to look for warning signs that may indicate decline in health. They also get to know the clients on their delivery routes really well and can kind of know when something doesn't seem quite right. In those situations, our volunteers know to immediately call back to staff at the office or to contact emergency services. We don't take federal funding. We've been very blessed here in Longmont to not have to come to that decision. It would place a number of difficult restrictions on our program and even limit who we can serve. We operate on community support. In fact, almost half of our financial support comes from individuals. We work to ensure that we're lean and mean and that every dollar really has as much impact as possible. Eighty-five cents on every dollar that we receive is going to direct program services. Almost services are becoming more and more vital. As I'm sure you all are aware of how the senior population is really burgeoning here in Longmont, I brought a graph along that I'm hoping you all have seen. But the line with the straight-up trajectory there, that's the senior population between 2010 and 2020 in Longmont. What started as kind of the middle of the road by 2020 will just be the second-largest population group in Boulder County. And during that entire time, Longmont actually has the largest population of seniors in Boulder County. Longmont Meals on Wheels is also important because it's helping seniors stay independent in their own homes or with family for as long as possible. Staying in the home has many emotional and mental benefits, as you can imagine. Moving a frail elderly person out of their home can mimic signs of dementia or worsen dementia. We want to avoid that for as long as possible and help seniors stay in their homes until it's the right time to move, if at all. But besides the emotional impact, there's also significant cost savings. Nursing homes are expensive. They're expensive for an individual, for a family, and as we all now know, they're very expensive for the national healthcare system. Longmont Meals on Wheels is part of the essential services that can help a senior or person with disability and their family save significant costs. In some cases, we're actually looking at about, what's happening is the average cost of nursing care facilities in Colorado are almost $4,500 a month. But with essential services to support independent living can be anywhere from around $300 to $2,500 a month. So really significant savings here. The reason we're here today, though, specifically, is because March, March this week already, it's March is March for Meals Month nationally. It's a national campaign that raises awareness about food insecurity and hunger among seniors. An article just a few weeks ago in USA Today called "This: The Hidden Hungry." That's because so many food insecure seniors are homebound, so they're behind closed doors, and they're kind of easy to forget about that way. Food insecurity can come in a variety of ways for seniors. It can be financial. It can be because of physical disability. But it can actually be more subtle than that. We have families who sign their seniors up for services where the senior insists that they can still cook, they're still able-bodied, they're sure they're fine. But family will come home at the end of the day, and the senior hasn't eaten. And when the family says, "What happened?", they say, "I just didn't feel like it today." This can be especially true after a medical situation. But skipping meals has a greater impact on the health of a senior than it does for actually any other food group, especially after those medical issues. It can actually send a senior right back into the hospital. In the middle of March for Meals Month is Mayor's for Meals Day on March 20th. On that day, Councilman Santos and Councilwoman Witt have already agreed to help us deliver and serve meals on that day. Mayor Coombs was really hoping to help us out, but he's actually busy at lunchtime that day, that particular day. But I want to extend an invitation to all of you and to also senior city service members to come out and gather on that day to kind of just raise awareness of the senior food issues in this community and the senior food organizations that are really helping out. I do want to spend a little more time talking about our volunteers as well. We cannot provide our vital services without them. They help in the kitchen, they serve meals at the Senior Center, and they deliver meals to the homes of clients. They're there for Longmont seniors in all kinds of ways. They have been there when diabetic seniors have not eaten until the volunteer arrives and need someone to sit with them while they eat to make sure that their blood sugar levels re-regulate. They have been there when there are serious problems. They have been there to celebrate when people with disabilities have successful medical procedures and no longer need our services. They have been there at the end as well. For many of our clients, an alma volunteer is the only person they see on a regular basis. The whole community owes a debt of gratitude to these amazing volunteers. But we currently need more volunteers, and we encourage anybody who is able, or if you know of anybody who is able, to please come out and volunteer with us. Also, I want to point out on this slide, the picture in the upper right-hand corner is a volunteer getting ready his bags for his delivery route, and that's actually in our new extended space at the Senior Center. So I just want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to be here today and taking time in your schedule today. Please do not forget about the hidden and unhidden seniors in our community, and do not forget about all of the programs in Longmont that are here to help. Yes, it's March 20th is Mayor for Meals Day, and that is at, for lunchtime, we actually can do a variety of things. If you want to go out on a delivery route, we would want you at the Senior Center around 10:15, 10:30, so that you can go out on a route. If you want to serve meals at the Senior Center, a lunch starts at 11:30, so if you could be there at 11:15. Or we can kind of do a combo deal where you're on a short delivery route and then also in the Senior Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Katie, thank you for the invite. In fact, those, Councilmember Bagley, I'll send you the email that Katie sent, and I'll also send it to the city manager, city attorney, and directors as well. So, and the assistants, city managers as well. So if you're interested, if you haven't done it, it's a lot of fun, it's eye-opening, and I would encourage any and all to do so. So, thank you.
And I'd like to thank Gabe and Katie for filling in because it's something that I can't do because I had a previous commitment that I got on my calendar down in Boulder. So, sorry about that. Councilmember Levison?
Yes, I think the thing that would really push Councilmember Bagley over the edge is what's for lunch that day? Let him know that that might persuade him to clear his schedule.
Go ahead, Sandy.
Great, thanks. Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. I wanted to just take a minute to go through what our tentative agenda is for your retreat. I just wanted to kind of talk through it a little bit, and I will send it out to you tomorrow via email so that you have an opportunity to look at it and make some comments before we actually move towards finalizing speakers, et cetera. But based on our conversation, you may remember a few months ago, we had a conversation during a pre-session around what types of things you were looking for in this year's retreat. And the types of things that you mentioned were that you wanted to focus on vision and kind of big-picture strategy moving forward, perhaps taking a look back, perhaps having a keynote on leadership, or an economist, or somebody to that effect, and then really positioning the city well, and the city council well, for the budget reset process. So those are the goals that we had in mind with the agenda. The agenda is pretty short and sweet. It ends up being about a day and a half instead of the full two days, which I think was also something mentioned as part of the suggestion. So what we would do is on Saturday, April 26th, we would start by taking a look back and having a historian from the Longmont Museum come and talk a little bit about, sorry, Friday, sorry, Friday, the 26th, talk a little bit about what's happened in Longmont history and where were the pivotal points in which elected officials in the community changed what Longmont looks like today. So really taking a look at some of those key points and really talking with you all and sharing some of those great wins that make Longmont the great place it is today. We would follow that by a keynote by Dave Manning, who is an economist. His website is ecomanney.com. And he recently wrote an article for the Denver Post called "The Leadership Checklist for the Economic Revolution." And he would come in and actually have an interactive session with the council around what does that look like in the new economy and kind of really talking about some assumptions and really asking you all what types of things you're going to need in the future. We would break for lunch at that point and then have a conversation about, okay, so if that's where we are in the past and this is what the future is now looking like, what can we do about it today? What is the vision of the city council? And so understanding today and planning for the future. So there would be an interactive session with Kathy Novak around the desired outcomes for government with the council. We would probably slide in there a tour of the water treatment plant at some point because it's a really cool place, and then have dinner in Lyons. On Saturday, we would kind of take this down to a more granular level and really bring in some consultants that are going to be helping us with our budget reset process to talk about the priority-based budgeting model and really show you what that looks like and what that's going to look like for Longmont as that process moves through. So I wanted to give you just that basic tentative schedule. I will send out an email with that so that you have a chance to look at it, and I would appreciate any comments or any feedback that y'all have before we finalize the agenda and get the speakers all in place.
Thank you, Sandy. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just double-checking on times for Friday and Saturday. Can we just double-check those so I can, once and for all, just make sure they're on my calendar?
That'd be great. We would appreciate that. Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, we have ourselves starting at 9:00 a.m. Friday, April 26th, at the water treatment plant, and going through dinner, and then on Saturday, also starting at 9:00. And ending probably around lunchtime, so 12:00, 1:00, we may have lunch and have a final discussion.
Just no further questions. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
All right, I guess it's time for First Call, Public Invited to Be Heard. Patrick Hallacy, did I pronounce that right?
We're on the list there for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. You state your names and addresses for the record?
Ed Gabor, Sunset, Orla. How you guys?
Ladies.
Ladies?
This is a quick one tonight. I don't even have my clock. The sixty percenters, those that voted for the ban, just wanted me to stop by tonight and say a couple of words. And those couple of words are, Fort Collins, welcome aboard, stay the course, thanks for having our back, we've got yours. We just wanted that on record. Actually, we're doing pretty good, because the opposition can't seem to stop messing up. I'm sure all of the drillers have been told, no more spills. Okay, eighty-four thousand gallons, whoosh. That spill made it all the way out to the San Francisco Chronicle, by the way, along with us in the fort. Yes, we're big, we're bad, we're nationwide. KOGA couldn't even get a petition correctly filed up at the fourth, and as one reporter has joked, the best way to ban fracking in the municipalities, just keep giving the microphone to the governor. He's doing great. To paraphrase one of you here, this thing is really taking on a life of its own. That's the nature of grassroots, it spreads. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Dale Lemon, followed by Richard Yale.
Pretty, uh, Dale Lemon, ten eighteen, Ponderosa Circle. And I'd like to speak about the environment. The Arctic, as you know, is losing its sea ice, and by volume losses, it was projected to be ice-free in September twenty fifteen, from the looks of it. And at that point, the insulation increase from absorption of sunlight will approximately double from, um, the changes that have already occurred. And you know that the, um, weather, we've had extremes of drought and storms, particularly the one on the East Coast, Sandy, where it collided with a blocking structure to the north, and then was shoved into a, um, into a, um, land, um, an Arctic-type that was, um, stationary. And it collided and combined, and we're having more of these types of events, and it's going to continue. And the costs to our nation and us as far as, um, well, not just food production, food price index rising and all that, but with disasters and these things. Now, I have friends, friends in high places, and you know, I think, that I, I know some of you from around, and you know I'm politically active, but I really, really would like to leave a planet for my children and the children today, and for them to have a life of their own. And I was speaking online with a friend who is a scientist and runs a blog called Arctic News Blog on just now, and he suggested that, um, um, adding charcoal to the soil is a good way to sequester carbon, and a good way in which the land can become more productive. And he suggests the use of something called FEBATE, which is a, um, monetary-neutral, uh, way to, um, get, um, emphasis placed on those things that do the most good for the environment. And it would also benefit those people who try to do good in their lives, what they, and how they treat the environment. And this is so important to me, and I'm sure it is to you, and it will become more so apparent. Um, that's all I really wish to say. I would, um, particularly like to advocate that you look up online, Arctic News Blog, or just Arctic News, or my name, or anything like that. You can look up, um, Google it. Um, you can look up, um, Arctic Methane Emergency Group, which is a group of scientists. So, very good.
Thank you. Uh, Richard Yale?
Good evening, Richard Yale. Uh, twelve, I live at twelve eleven Baker Street, Longmont. And, uh, I have, uh, before you, uh, there was a request for resolution, and, uh, we'd, we'd ask, uh, Dr. Cog had, had pushed this on Skytran to get it through and get it through before the end of the month. That does not give council even a chance to know what, what they would be approving or, or endorsing or not. And, uh, Skytran has been selected by CDOT to take the lead on the I seventy corridor and the I twenty-five corridor, and I have a certificate of our certification of, of the system. And, uh, they are also doing a study on a city-to-city interconnector, uh, which would be used as, as a preliminary before you actually, uh, start moving and changing things on the internet, internet, it's interstate highways themselves. And, uh, Longmont could be chosen as, uh, as a route from Longmont to Boulder to do this inner-city connector. And so, I have also included, there's a packet of the, uh, of the proposal, and the, and the internet, or the inner-city connector, which is, which is in the documents that you do have. And so, we'd, we'd simply request that you do look at it, and we hope that Longmont does choose to participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Don't have anybody else on the list? Is anybody else like to speak at Public Invited to Be Heard? All right, I guess I'll close Public Invited to Be Heard.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on second reading and public hearing is ordinance two thousand thirteen oh five. It's a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand thirteen. There is no formal staff presentation, but we have staff in the audience to address questions.
Okay. Is there any questions from council members before I open this up for public hearing? Seeing none, I will open this for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Does someone want to make a motion? Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd move ordinance two thousand thirteen dash zero five.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance two thousand thirteen oh six, a bill for an ordinance amending the two thousand thirteen, two thousand seventeen capital improvement program. Again, there is no staff presentation on this item.
Okay, is there any questions from council members before I open this up? All right, I'll open this up for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Finley?
I move oh two thousand thirteen oh six.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, next is your consent agenda. Item nine A is ordinance two thousand thirteen oh seven, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter fourteen point oh eight of the Longmont Municipal Code on Industrial Pretreatment. And public hearing and second reading is scheduled for March nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. Item nine B is resolution two thousand thirteen twelve, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for acceptance of recyclables at the Boulder County Recycling Center. Resolution two, item nine C is resolution R two thousand thirteen thirteen, authorizing an application with Northern Colorado, excuse me, Northern Colorado Water Conservancy District to contract for the beneficial use of Colorado Big Thompson Project water and prescribing the terms of the application. Item nine D is resolution R two thousand thirteen, number fourteen, approving the Union Reservoir Lease Extension between the city and the Union Reservoir Company. And item nine E is resolution two thousand thirteen fifteen, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Regional Air Quality Council for air quality planning services in two thousand thirteen. And item nine F is, um, to authorize staff to review the Twin Peaks Metropolitan District Service Plan Amendment. And we don't need to pull anything.
Okay. These are all discussions or items to be moved from the consent agenda? Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Uh, just have a quick question on nine D, if we could pull it, please.
Nine D.
I'd like to move the consent agenda minus item D.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Item nine D is resolution two thousand thirteen fourteen. It's the Union Reservoir Lease Extension, and Kim Sugar is here to make some questions.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I actually have two points. One is, again, there are scouts in the audience, and if you get the impression that this is an easy job, we are here usually until, like, what, four in the morning? It's tough. It is tough. And so, I want you to see a little bit of fireworks and fighting going on up here, so you come back. I'm just kidding. Um, my only question is, who is the Union Reservoir Company? Who owns that? And I'm just curious, is, what's going on there?
Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, um, there are a variety of owners for different reservoir companies. Um, one, the city does own eighty-five percent of the shares, so we are the largest shareholder. And actually, I can't remember the names of the other individuals. I don't know if Dale has them, but they are landowners that have water rights for ten. Even better.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman Bagley. Um, the Union Reservoir Company actually was originally incorporated by the Union Ditch Company. The Union Ditch is located on the main stem of the platte at La Salle, Colorado. Uh, they came up there, built the reservoir, um, and of course issued shares in that company to, uh, at that time, shareholders in the Union Ditch Company. Over the years, those shares were sold to, to other water rights owners on the main stem. Uh, in the seventies, uh, most of the mains, a lot of main stem water users started using wells, and so in the eighties, they, uh, were not using the water rights as much, and, uh, Longmont was able to then acquire shares in the company. So the Union Reservoir is just a, um, mutual reservoir company, um, organized under the state statutes for corporations and, and is a independent company.
And we have, this lease gives, we basically have the exclusive right to use the reservoir as the city. We control it?
Uh, yes, that is correct. Um, most irrigation reservoir companies, uh, lease the surface rights to their reservoir out, uh, for recreational purposes. And so this lease allows Longmont to, to have that lease.
Just curious. Thank you. Um, if there's no further questions, comments, or concerns, I would move that we pass resolution two thousand thirteen dash fourteen.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on general business is the Boulder County proposed planning effort for mountain area linkage trails, and again, Kim Sugar is here to make that presentation.
Good evening, Kim Sugar, Natural Resources Manager. Um, this item is, um, bringing to the council that Boulder County has invited fellow public land management agencies in Boulder County to participate in a planning process to look at potential mountain area linkage trails. And this effort has been brought about by inquiries of the public. In addition, this is actually, um, also a reaction to, um, Secretary Salazar's effort that was initiated in two thousand and eleven to look at getting trails from Denver metro area up to Rocky Mountain National Park. And I did provide an article that was in the February eighteenth paper at Sugar's desk that, um, talked about that effort and that there's been one point seven million dollars allocated. But it is at the, um, I guess the kind of Jefferson County, Voder County southeast corner area. So, um, with that, um, the idea of this effort would be to look at existing trails first before trying to create any additional linkages, and respect the different management plans of the existing organizations in the area. Excuse me. So, I'm here to get some direction or feedback from council. We have taken this item to both the Water Board and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Um, items brought up by both those boards, um, there is some concern about if this effort were to move forward, what some of the costs would be to the city. Um, additionally, from the Water Board, there's concern of maintaining protection of the water setup at Button Rock and being able to continue our prescription of managing that area. So with that, that's the comments we've had so far. Um, the next steps of this would be, um, beginning that planning process, the county starting to put together an agreement for participation by the agencies, and in this, they are asking for staff time right now to participate, but no actual, um, costs, excuse me. Um, if it's decided to move forward with design, that they would, um, bring back another agreement to ask for cost share or go for grants.
Councilmember Witt?
I think I would, um, agree with the Water Board that we do need to protect Button Rock Reservoir, and for that very reason, I think we need to be involved. Uh, if you don't have a seat at the table, your property or your people are on the menu. And so I think it's probably important that we are involved at some level. Um, I would be interested in finding out what the actual costs would be, but there's no reason that we should not be involved.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would, uh, concur with Councilmember Witt's comments. It'd be great to be involved in this. Um, what kind of, uh, grants would they, would this kind of project be eligible for? Are we talking about all of us putting in all of our requests for GO-CO funds as a consortium, stuff like that, so we could, uh, do whatever work might come out of the, uh, a project list, or, um, would there be federal, well, there's not going to be any federal grants past March first, so don't even need to ask about that. Um, would be, there be any money in the cookie jar anywhere else that we could think of?
Uh, Mayor, councilmember, um, at this point, we haven't looked that far. The grants we're talking about is, would be planning grants that would either be GO-CO or state trails, and we've definitely unified as a group to get those, just to move forward with some of the planning and design, depending on what comes out of that public process. And then from there, I think the group would then need to decide the next steps. And how the, how this is being set up is that each stuff, each group will be coming back to their governing body for input, so no one's just going to run out and create these new maps and new lines and trails because of the costs. And there are also a lot of existing plans that the different agencies already have, and different charges and charters for different groups, too. So this first step is more just a listening session with the public, then we would come back, and if there's a desire to do further planning and design, and that's when we would, either they would be asking everybody to pitch in for planning, or we'd go for grants at that point.
And when we're looking at these large, um, projects that absolutely leverage our assets along the front range, I would suggest that, um, this would have been a great item to go in front of Visit Longmont, because, you know, it's part of an amenity if you're coming to Longmont, if there's going to be a, a trail system where somebody wants to come and, and take a thirty-mile bike ride. Um, you know, it's an asset for us, and, and having a different kind of viewpoint besides just the parks or the water viewpoint might be, um, a good part of a conversation that, that might be a little bit unusual to include, but it may be valid and, uh, give a perspective that, that, um, would help engage the public.
Well, you know, the mountain bike community would be thrilled to death if there was a trail around Mount Ralph Price Reservoir, so you could ride off-road from Lyons to the park. I think those, that group of people would be doing backflips and cartwheels if that ever happened, but, um...
Councilmember Samari?
I guess that statement just killed the project.
[laughing]
So what's the timeframe on this, from start to finish?
Um, we actually have it evaluated. That, uh, my next step is the next month or so, finalize an agreement, bring it back to the governing bodies, and then be, initiate that listening session with the public. So that's the next two to three months. That's the plan.
That's all I'm hearing. That's all I'm hearing from you, that all the groups involved are signed up and ready to go.
Yeah, nobody has taken an agreement to their board yet, and so, we're actually using this month to provide updates and kind of feel out, see where everybody wants to head. And then, um, we're actually meeting Thursday this week to start putting together the agreement and our next steps.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would echo Councilmember Witt. I think it's definitely important that we have a seat at the table. However, my concern is that even though we own Button Rock, it's not in Longmont. And I know that we're short on dollars. We have trails to finish here. We all have, uh, parks and rec needs that I think we need to see met here locally. So, on one hand, I think it's a great idea to be involved, but I would be hesitant to put dollars towards funding Boulder and Lyons recreational mountain bike activities. Um, I want mountain bike activities here. I'm all for that. So, I'd be hesitant before we just jump in and say, "Hey, yeah, we'll put in equal money", because our citizens wouldn't be using it. Uh, we want to protect the water source, not necessarily provide money for, for our neighbors. Thank you. But I, I, I know what you meant. I know what you meant, Mayor.
There's a lot of mountain bikers in Longmont.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, but it's not in Longmont. I, I mean, I'm just saying that I like, I like mountain biking, too. I'm just saying that let's build trails here locally instead of in the mountains. That's all I'm saying.
But they wouldn't be mountain biking trails.
But they'd be here.
Right. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we need to give him up to Button Rock on the water tour. So, Ken, uh, Dale, it's time to take a, when spring comes around, we need to take another field trip for council members who haven't been up to Button Rock up, up there. So, uh, clear, yeah, clear your calendars, council members who haven't been up there. It's actually a great, uh, field trip. I would agree with Councilmember Witt. We need to have a seat at the table. Um, but with everyone involved, are we equal partners in this, in this discussion? That's my concern. With the city of Boulder and Boulder County and Denver Water, I, I don't want to be overshadowed by those, by those entities.
Yes, and we hear that. And right now, they've set up that we're equal partners, and right now, we're just having the discussion and we're not committing any funds or anything to this, and it definitely, it's being at the seat of the table, since we do have an interest in this area, we don't want to inherit something, so...
No, I understand.
I think the key point in this is, is, is that we do feel like we do need a seat at the table now to initiate the discussion and make sure that we are adequately representing the interests of the city, uh, the residents of our community, um, and that we are equal partners in that discussion. And then, as that discussion progresses, that will be the point where there may or there may not be, uh, funding requests come in, but that will obviously be something that we will bring back to the council, um, so we can look at it more specifically. So, uh, we're not taking this as that we're going to be willing to commit funds to the project, but we, we are going to have a seat at the table to discuss the project.
Well, and as many, uh, fishing passes that sell out, and Valerie could probably help you with that. Six hundred every year to go up through, we didn't sell out this year, but six hundred are available to go up through Ralph Price, and so, eh, usually sell out the first day. Those are six hundred fishing passes that people come to the, you know, come to either the Memorial Building at Roosevelt Park or here at the City Clerk's Office, and I think there's only one other place. I'm sorry, City Lions, that you can buy those, those passes. I mean, those are residents that come, you know, city residents and some outside the city that can buy those fishing passes to go up there. So, there's a lot of, um, uses besides mountain bikes, which would probably be a nice use, but also, um, you know, people that walk up there, not only from the city of Longmont, but outside, but it gets well-used, Councilmember Bagley, so, yeah. Again, I wouldn't mind having a seat at the table. I just want to make sure that we're equal partner.
Councilmember Witt?
And, and just to clarify, giving our opinions not going to cost us anything. And that, that's all I'm advocating for, is that we give our opinion and to, to be there to give the feedback that, you know, we would really prefer that trails not go through that land that we own, because we do own that land, um, or whatever. And so, that's all I'm saying at this point, is we need to be there to protect our interests.
Councilmember Finley?
Well, I'd like to weigh in also. I, uh, I am in agreement that we need to have a seat at the table. That costs us nothing, and I think our trails are something that our citizens absolutely love, and we should be a part of that process. And wouldn't it come back if there were funding needs in the future? It would have to come up back to us before funding would be spent anyway?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I think the direction I, uh, of everybody here on council is, let's, let's have a seat at the table and see where it goes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Mayor Coombs, next item is board and commission appointments, so I'm going to move to the podium. Mayor Coombs, members of council, we have several boards that, um, we were not able to fill at the end of the year, and then a few vacancies that have come up since then. So, these are appointments for those year-end ones, and they're starting the midterm recruitment here pretty quick. So, first item is the Board of Environmental Affairs. You have one unexpired term, and you have two applicants, and you should vote for one on your ballot, and Sandy's going to collect them. Mayor Coombs voted for Donna Ciccarelli. Councilmember Santos voted for Donna Ciccarelli. Councilmember Levison voted for Susan Varutsky. Councilmember Bagley voted for Donna Ciccarelli. Councilmember Witt voted for Donna Ciccarelli. Councilmember Samori voted for Donna Ciccarelli, and Councilmember Finley voted for Donna Ciccarelli. So, Donna Ciccarelli will be your BEA board member. The next one is the General Employee Retirement Pension Board. You only have one applicant for one term, so you can make a motion on that if you like.
Councilmember Santos? I move that we appoint, uh, Dan Wolford to that board.
All right, let's vote. Okay, it's unanimous.
Next one is the Golf Course Advisory Board. Um, Robert Burke has withdrawn his application, so you'll need to mark him off of there. You did not interview Bob Gleason. He was unable to attend the interviews, but he does still want to be considered for the position.
Mayor?
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I need to recuse myself.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if you didn't vote for three, could you take your ballot back and vote for three? Okay, Santos voted for Kurt Finley, uh, David Wurgeon, and Charles Simonson. Samori voted for James Manzeneras, Doug X., and Kurt Finley. Councilmember Witt voted for Doug X., Kurt Finley, and David Wurgeon. Mayor Coombs voted for James Manzeneras, Kurt Finley, and David Wurgeon. Levison voted for Bob Gleason, James Manzeneras, and Doug X. And Bagley voted for James Manzeneras, Kurt Finley, and David, Dave Wurgeon. So, it looks like Kurt Finley received five votes, James Manzeneras received four votes, and David Wurgeon received four votes. So, those will be your three appointees. The last board is the Visit Longmont Board. There's one open position. You can vote for one. Mayor?
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Valerie, we did, there's still a name that, uh, I thought Douglas Hines had withdrawn? That's still on the, the ballot?
Michelle did not inform me that he had withdrawn. Did he withdraw, draw the app, the interviews? Douglas Hines? Okay. Levison voted for Mary Blue. Bagley voted for Mary Blue. Santos voted for Mary Blue. Coombs voted for Mary Blue. Finley voted for Erin Pernick. Samori voted for Erin Pernick. And Witt voted for Mary Blue. So, that's five votes for Mary Blue. And we're done. Thank you.
All right. Next, it's time for final call. Public invited to be heard. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close Public Invited to Be Heard. It's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Witt?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of weeks ago, when we were discussing, um, transportation issues, we need to select somebody to serve as a representative for the northern area, this study, um, the NAM study, I'm always getting it wrong. And I think we can have one or two individuals, two. So, I was wondering if maybe, could you, uh, Harold, could you talk to us about how we're going to choose those?
So, based on the information I have at this point, is, as we look at the study, um, and I think Phil's still working on some of this, is, is that we have the ability to have, they said one or two, and so, I'm going to assume we can have two, um, in this case. And, and I think what we can do is we can bring that back to council, um, so you all can, um, select among yourselves as who you would like to, um, serve in that capacity. There may be in the discussion that they want, that at least, that the one position they're going to define is maybe the mayor, and, and so, we're trying to make sure that we have all of that information straight as we bring it back.
Thank you. Um, the reason why I ask is that I know other communities have currently selected their individuals, and so, I'm concerned that we get our, our...
Dexon.
Dexon, so, um, and then, I think I was supposed to say something else when I remember it. I'll jump back in the queue.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have a couple of things. First of all, I want to congratulate the city staff on the excellent snow removal efforts. Um, the streets are clear and clean, and it was done with alacrity, and I just love that. I also, uh, want to mention, uh, my business of the week this week will be the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce, as they're having the Unity in the Community Thursday from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Conference Center. Great opportunity for elected officials and business leaders to get together and chat about, uh, what's going on, and I hope I see you all there at Unity in the Community. Um, and full disclosure, I am on the golf board. Uh, I understand my husband was just elected to serve on that board, but I am a non-voting council liaison person who comes to the meetings and listens to their activities and, and therefore, um, don't see that there would be a conflict, uh, in, in both of us going to that, those advisory board meetings. He would be the voting board member. I would be the council liaison, who sits there and smiles and nods when they vote on things. Uh, but I want, I want everyone to understand that, uh, I'm making a full disclosure of that at this time. I think that's it.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Way to go, Troop sixty-five, for hanging out for the whole meeting. We made it extra short for you tonight, so you can get home and do your homework. And last week, we didn't have a meeting, so I didn't get to embarrass our city man, city attorney and announce his birthday, which was last Tuesday, right? If you remember that far back, Monday. So, join me in singing "Happy Birthday", John, please.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jean. Happy birthday to you.
Councilmember Levison?
So, I just wanted to, uh, do a couple of, uh, congratulatory things this evening and then, um, report doubt on, um, activities with CML from last week. Um, first of all, the Historic Preservation Commission had their first-ever history fair at the museum on Saturday, and it was well-attended, and the speakers were great, and a lot of enthusiasm. And some of the most important things that happened that day is, people found out a lot of things they didn't already know about Longmont, which is great. And groups that aren't normally able to have a, a setting where they can network together, like the, uh, um, people from the museum, the Callahan House was represented with a table, um, the, uh, Saint Brain Historical Society, all those folks are usually not in the same room together, and so, it provided not only an opportunity for the public to interact with those groups, but those groups to see everyone else who is interested in preservation in this, uh, city. And we also had people from outside the, the city come and, uh, participate, um, and I, I think I'll get her name right, Laburn Johnson, um, from Lyons, who's a, uh, member of their, uh, I guess it's a town board. Um, she's a longtime preservationist in Lyons. She attended, which was really great to see her there. Um, and then, want to thank also the Asian Pacific Association of Longmont that put together one heck of a celebration for Chinese New Year on Saturday. And also want to congratulate El Comité on a very successful fundraising dinner that evening. It was like a triple trifecta for me on, on Saturday. Um, and, uh, then a couple of things about, uh, the Colorado Municipal League Legislative Workshop was last week, and Sandy Cedar and Don Cantana and I attended, and I attended a breakout session on Amendment sixty-four, and we got an update on the work of the task force. You've seen a lot of this, um, coming through in newspaper reports and also, uh, television coverage, and I think that the task force is chugging along, and, and we'll see where all the rules end up. Uh, but that was a great, um, update to get. And I think everybody can, uh, pretty much, Sandy will catch us up on all the issues with the Policy Committee as far as the positions the Policy Committee took on various pieces of legislation, and I think everyone's getting that State House report. And I guess, you know, the, some of the, um, the other information, um, let's see, I'm just trying to, to filter through here. I think that the, the last part that we, was covered for the day on Wednesday was Carolyn Coleman from, um, National League of Cities, talking about, um, the deficit reduction efforts and, um, also some priorities, which we'll all hear at National League of Cities next week. Three priorities that, that they're going to set forth for consideration this year is to support, um, initiatives to, uh, solve some of the issues around the, uh, immigration and, uh, system, and then preserving the tax exemption for municipal bonds, and then really the big push is going to be to, um, see if the Marketplace Fairness Act, which would allow cities to be able to collect the sales tax from online sales, um, to see if we can't accomplish that. Uh, that, that would be a major, um, increase in revenue for our city if that was accomplished. Anyway, I imagine Sandy's going to be able to give us an update in the future on, um, other CML policy, uh, initiatives, but it's, uh, we're going to be waiting till other things get introduced later in the session as well.
Councilmember Bagley?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Coombs. A couple of comments. One, um, is the RTD, uh, reps that you mentioned, Councilmember Witt, coming from council? Okay. It might be a good idea to know who is not interested in doing that. Me. So you can take my name off the list. I will serve if you put a gun to my head, but I think there are other people who are more passionate and qualified, so take my name out of the hat, please. I also think it's a wonderful thing that you and your spouse can serve together on the golf board. Not only do I think it's appropriate, I envy you for your opportunity, the opportunity to snuggle at night with your fellow board members. What a wonderful thing. Also, I just wanted to say that I was -- we changed the process for how we interview the board members, and I, for one, feel a lot more comfortable how we're doing it. I think that overall, getting to know all the applicants, and I just feel a lot more comfortable voting. And just I wanted -- there were several, several applicants who wanted and were willing to serve that were well-qualified, and I wish we had the spots. And I look at the boards I serve on, and I hope that they continue to apply, because I see a need for these same people to serve in the future. And so thank you so much, everyone, for applying, and hope to see them reapply, because there will be an opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Well, I would like to thank Bobby King for being the master of ceremonies at the Asian Pacific Association event. So I'd like to thank the leadership class and Carrie Adams at Skyline and the principal, Eric Finistad, for hosting that event. I mean, they had incredible -- they had these break dancers. They had this guy, he was just a phenomenal -- I mean, they were all phenomenal athletes, but if you don't think breakdancing is athletic, this one guy did a one-handed handstand, and he flicked his legs in the air, and he hopped on one hand for 45 straight seconds. I mean, it was absolutely incredible. I was just -- yeah. Right. And I'd also like to comment that even though Brian Bagley hasn't gone for the water tour up to Ralph Price Reservoir and Button Rock Dam, at least his dog, Petey, has been up there with me, so.
All right. City manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, mayor.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.